Six thirty, March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. This is the annual reorganizational meeting. I will take nominations for select board chair.
I nominate Nelson Tiff for chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Nelson? Nelson, you take over and...
Good evening, everybody. Next door would be to nominate a vice chair to run the meetings in my absence. I would nominate Bruce.
Would like to nominate Kathy?
Bruce. I nominate Bruce.
I second that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And now you can, I think, nominate me if you want.
About just, and then unless we had to go to a second.
Are they the nominations?
I think...
Kathy for Justin's.
For Kathy, yes, okay. Is there a second on that?
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor of Bruce, say aye. Aye. All those in favor of Kathy, say aye. Kathy, your vice. Normally, we take care of the rest of the things that we have to do here for housekeeping. In the past, we've used the Roland Harrell for our publications. Normally, we advertise positions that come open, the tax sales, that type of thing. Does anybody have any other ideas as to the paper, or are we going to go with Roland Harrell again?
Go with the Harrell.
With the Harrell. There's a agreement with the Harrell. So the last couple of years, we've been meeting at six-thirty here on Monday nights. Is that agreeable with everybody, or...
Well, they may be opposed to doing it at seven, just usually...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Sorry, that anybody opposed to doing it around seven instead of six-thirty?
Till seven?
Yeah, starting at seven.
We end up going through it sometimes. I don't start any later in the evening, you know.
That's fine. Yeah, I just, just putting my note, that's all.
Okay, so we're good at six-thirty, let's do it.
That'll be good as well as soon as we time get out.
No, yeah, she's already, she's already asleep now, so it's, it's at six o'clock, that's no weird.
Yeah.
You have in your packet a copy of the rules. We adopted these back in, I believe it was two thousand eighteen. The VLCT team suggested that we go with this type of a shorter abbreviated ruling, rather than going with the somewhat traditional Robert's rules. They seem to have worked out fairly well in the past. I would ask if there's a consensus that we continue using these rules? Everybody seems to be in agreement. That would be the town of Wallingford law rules and procedure for municipal boards committees and commissions. That brings us down to basically, normally, the start of our regular meeting. I am advised they are no justice to the agenda and that the pay orders are as they were written. The first minutes are for February twenty-second of twenty-two. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion?
I make a motion.
And a second, sir. Do we have anything needs to be corrected, amended, abbreviated, looked at?
There is one little bit back there. It stopped.
Okay.
I think you want to say B.
Okay. Got it.
We just have one.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just a table.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of February twenty-two, say aye. Any vote? The annual information meeting, one minute, that would be from February twenty-eighth.
You actually have to recuse yourselves, you two, because you weren't in ten minutes.
That's right, you two recuse yourselves from, from accepting the minutes because you weren't at the meeting.
Okay. So that'll be the same for the twenty-eighth, for the town meeting information meeting?
Exactly.
Looking through it, I think it's pretty well complete. Does anybody say anything needs to be revised? Are we good, Kathy?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Pay orders for March eighth, that would be tomorrow, currently is showing as sixteen thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and nine cents. As I said there, no addition. Any corrections, any questions as to any of the items listed?
So just so you know, there, over on the table down below, at the end of the meeting, there's minutes and everything that you'll sign each, each meeting. There's also the stack of actual pay orders. And they'll always be there before the beginning of the meeting, so if you come early, you could, you're welcome to go through all them voices if you want, because they're there for your viewing.
Hearing none in favor of the sixteen thousand, six fifty oh nine, say aye. Sandy's created an honorable mention that we go through each meeting. Currently, we're looking at Walter Tier. He volunteered the rope for the ice out over the Elfin Lake. As you know, Julie, it had a raffle, and when the ice would go out over there, I'm not sure if there's been a winter or not.
The ice has not gone out yet. I can give an update on this if you'd like me to. Michael went up with Bert Jones yesterday afternoon up by the boys camp. They got permission to do it, and they took a sled, and they got the, the block is out on the ice. And they tried one version of attaching the clock to the rope, didn't work, so they're going to use tape to attach the rope to the clock, and it's just about all set.
All right.
That block will drop in the ice.
We would thank Wendy Saber and Michael Lutator. They are maintaining the walking path over there, the, I guess you would call it the book path.
The book path, yes.
Yeah. Just as a note here at election day, volunteers raised four hundred ninety-three dollars on that for the Wallingford Day that's oncoming this summer. Also, Bill and Stephanie Brooks made a donation to the Standard. That is our little town newsletter that goes out to you once, once a month in the mail. That brings us to you, Phil.
Well, not a whole lot changed in the town or the weather, really. I've heard nothing on the oh-fourteen that's still sitting idle. There's had no major issues at all on the little fourteen. They're still running that, they were working on it a little bit today. Sand has held up fairly well. Salt is, I think they ordered some more in, I don't know if they got it or not, but it was ordered. Other than that, everything has been going fairly smoothly, there's no major issues at all down there. Other than that, there's not a whole lot to tell. No major breakdowns, nobody, I've heard or had any complaints, major complaints, a few little ones, but...
Three D S all day on Nash Drive.
Yeah.
She wanted the road crew to come up and take a look during the rain, because it's running right down the road, washing her yard and her driveway out. It's been an issue for the last few years, and they put up a burn, she just thinks that burn needs a little work.
Okay. Take a look at that. Steve, look at that tomorrow.
Have you got anything on the grader? We've got three proposals. One is from Milton Cat, and the other two are from John Deere. Just looking through the John Deere one. Those are obviously two different graders.
Yeah.
Which one is more appropriate to what we're actually looking at?
They're both pretty close, the same machine. They just, one's a little different version, a little different drivetrain and stuff, anything on it. Actually, Case is in there, too. There's, there's three different companies bidding it, Case, John Deere, Caterpillar.
We never see Case again.
You haven't? Been set twice.
Not to me.
It doesn't go.
I had one from Milton, two from John Deere.
Yeah, there's two different graders in John Deere. There's another one from Case, too, they, they were the first ones to bid.
Okay, we'll talk to them.
I'll figure out why it's not going to. But looking into that, a little more, I can give you specs on it and stuff, but Case was the highest one of the three bids.
That's the five hundred thousand one there, minus thirty-one, I think it was.
No, no, Case was three hundred and, I want to say eighteen, I think. John Deere was, I think they had two, one was two eighty-two and one two eighty-eight. I think that's the...
Yeah, that was the submitted price. That wasn't the list.
No, that was the submitted price. And then...
One's two eighty-two, one's two ninety-seven.
Two ninety-seven is one. And then Case hadn't subtracted the twenty-five thousand off the top of theirs, three eighteen, so it was minus the twenty-five, so whatever that comes out to, two eighty-eight, something like that. And Caterpillar came in with the trade at two sixty. Equivalent, machine. In the past, two pieces of equipment we both bought, our last three pieces of equipment we bought from Ben Cat, they'd beat out the other two competitors price-wise.
How do you standard for the liability for long-term?
Cat is top of the line.
Okay.
Cat, Deere, they're all top-of-the-line machines, but Caterpillar's probably been around the most, the longest. And we've had the two we bought in the last, well, we've got an old nine backhoe. And then we've got the two latest machines, a loader and the track excavator. We've had no issues with them at all. So Saying that, I don't sure which way you guys want to go, but I think I know which way you want to go. Problem is, they're a year, year and a half out, I would guess. And with the way things are going down with the economy, there may be more than that.
Will we be locking in the price?
Yes, that's the thing. I think John Deere had a thirty-day, I think by April first is as far as the quote would go. I'm not sure with Cat.
The service, service price for the other two, if Milton has local guys, do the other two, or how far out do they have to travel?
On the machine? That's everybody here, your place.
No, I mean, if you needed maintenance, daily maintenance or fixing.
There's just no issues, they, they kind of need it, I'll take them right.
I know Milton has, I just didn't know the other two, if they were local.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, John Deere's in Springfield.
Okay. I saw those as a sales, but I wasn't sure of that.
Case, Case I don't know a super lot about, because it's just not a common, it's from Colchester area up that way. And it's just not a common, I don't ever see any of them around, so I, I know it's because of the price, or, well, I just don't know. I don't think they're a bad machine or anything, I think it's just, they're not out there.
I was looking online for the engines, because of the, for the request for the Vermont diesel emissions reduction.
Yeah.
And it looks like the John Deere meet the, I think the series four, or the final, tier four final. I couldn't tell if the Cat...
Yes, it does.
It does, okay.
They all have to now.
Okay.
Over a certain amount of horsepower, I think they all have.
Okay, because then that would change whether we get thirty-five or get twenty-five, if we apply for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The horsepower is the cause, whatever the horsepower listing is, they say needs to be changed for putting in the tier four.
Okay.
Has Julie had a chance to talk to the banks at all about what they...
She's talking to the state loan program, and she said she'll have some numbers for you on March twenty-first at the next meeting. But they did have a limit, how much they would loan out. Which I, I think is like around a hundred and ten. So we might have to catch together a few things.
No, I think what I was communicating with you, I was looking at the, the programs that they've got for financing. And it struck me that those finance rates are pretty high. I don't know if anybody else has looked at the, the financing, I think it was in the CAP.
Yeah.
The CAP program. They're looking at like five thousand a year in the, in that for interest.
Are they bad?
In the financing?
Yeah.
Do you have anything to say on that financing, Phil, said here that you might have some information on that?
What's this then?
There's the program, funds that could be used, the diesel emissions reduction, financial assistance, is that what Nelson is talking about?
That was the program where if we...
Oh, with the state.
Yeah. That would be thirty thousand dollars if you bought a new...
New machine, huh? Then they take, cut that one up like they did...
Take it out of service, yeah.
I know. I don't understand where they're coming with this program. This program, when they started it, I think it was quite a better arrangement, it made it worth while. My thought on that is, if you take and take this machine away from whichever dealer gets it, they're just going to turn around and might bump the price to adjust for their, what they're going to get for resale on that used machine. There's, it's a pros and cons. For the four or five thousand dollars difference between what the state is offering and what you're actually going to see, your gain is, I don't think. It may, it may come around on the other end.
So we wouldn't be able to put the existing gallon towards this price with all these, if we do the state program, that's what you're saying? Because they have to destroy it.
Yeah, they destroy it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay.
That, that was, that was not clear, and that makes more sense.
Yeah, they just break it, they literally come in and cut it right off, right off the truck, right off.
Okay. That's good.
They have the main program offering the fall, and they give up to fifty percent of the cost of the equipment.
Then it would be just fine.
Yeah. But it's also highly competitive, and you don't know, you know, you could get it or not, so...
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And also, we have to do, we have to get it done by the month.
Exactly.
Because that's when the cutoff is.
Yeah, it's something that, well, the state, I think, is a time limit, if I remember right.
It has to be done by, I think...
For this one, it's March twenty-eighth, for this thirty thousand.
But then we have to pay for it if we buy September or August or something, or let's, either that or twenty twenty-three, I couldn't remember. It had a stipulation when we had to use the funds.
Yes. By, by like September or like twenty twenty-three, you have to finalize or you don't get the money. Yeah, so I don't, I mean, I don't know how quick, because if we order now...
Yeah, if you order, you know, it'd be one of those things, if you ordered now, it was like the little dump truck when we bought that. You know, we ordered it, it took four or five months to get, then it was another eight months to put the box on. So it kind of, you have to plan ahead on this. It's not like they're sitting on a lot anymore, there's just basically nothing on lots anymore.
Certainly, we give Julie's numbers by the next meeting, that would be the twenty-first.
Right.
Would we still have time enough to get in, get a proposal into the state on that program?
On the emission?
Yeah.
It would be due the twenty-eighth, yeah.
Yeah, so we'd be able to...
Yeah, if you still, if you want to go in that direction, yeah.
My thought is we table it till the next meeting here, until we get some numbers from Julie. In the past, we've got some really good rates through the state. I think at one point, some were like one to two percent.
Yeah, let's see what we get from June.
Yeah. Okay. That's been waiting.
The only other thing is, I, I was asked today to suggest to you, you put top tiers on the paving list, so I wanted to pass that on to you.
Yeah, I did that.
Anything else, Phil?
Well, just one little thing, just food for thought for the board. Instead of trying to research financing every time we buy a piece of equipment, is maybe fall under like Town of Clarendon does and put a set amount aside every year? Have, vote, have the voters vote on it, the town, to put X amount of dollars away every year, so they have it in a slush fund for the equipment? I know Clarendon was at seventy-five, now they're a hundred thousand a year in a fund that they have equipment.
So ready.
Money ready, so they don't have to finance.
So it's a sinking fund?
Yep, it's a sinking fund, they put X amount of dollars aside every year, I think it's a hundred thousand now.
I think just about every year for the last, I don't know how many, we've had that suggestion. And somehow, it seems that when we finalize the budget, we're always looking at not trying to raise taxes. And that seems to be one of the things that we never wind up completing or putting into the budget. I would love to see us do it. I think the biggest thing is that when we reach that January period to get next year, when we're finalizing the budget, if we're at a point where we can actually fulfill that dream. Unfortunately, it's been kind of a dream in the past.
I think we should just put it out to the ballot, let them decide. You know, let the voters decide whether they want to make a sinking fund for equipment or pay the interest every year.
I think it'd be a great line item to have. Well, like I said, it's just always been a question, will we get that last final line?
Maybe rather than put it into the budget as a line item, you put it as a separate item on the ballot.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
Like we did in the budget.
But it is, just let it hold on, see if that's something we'd like to do.
Are there going to be other big equipments that we're going to be after replacing soon?
We, we should be replacing a dump truck right now, there's another three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
In a couple of years, another dump truck. The backhoe is, I think, a nine or an eleven, I don't remember which. That's ten years old already. It should be a seven-year rotation maximum on equipment.
Yeah.
In this situation. Sometimes it gets run more, and the grader's twenty-two, I think.
Yeah, he's a ninety-nine.
Yeah, it's ninety-nine, so it's twenty-two, twenty-three years old. What happens is your resale is gone.
Yeah.
If, instead of trying to turn it over in a reasonable amount of time, or you get some of your money back towards the next one. If the grader happens to have an issue this fall or this spring, you've basically got a piece of scrap there.
Right.
You know, it's, you get to the point where the money it costs to repair it is more than the actual machine is worth.
Right.
And it doesn't take long to do that, because we're finding out with our oh-fourteen dump truck.
No, that makes sense.
Thank you, Phil.
I'm all set, thank you.
I would just comment, I've gone by the garage a couple of times. Steve was in the garage cleaning out the small truck. He had a slight clog in it, obviously, you've got to keep that in the bottom sander on it opened up. Other than that, everybody was busy.
We have it three, four times in the last week.
Yeah.
It's been Nelson Howard working.
The, thank you, Phil. The annual financial plan for the town highways. Did you get a chance to take a look at this? Basically, we just sign off on it every year.
Which, when it always runs out, will you just give...
The annual financial plan for the town highways.
No, it's just, it's a formula based on our budget. It's just, we just plug in the numbers, and the state gives us the formula to decide winter maintenance and summer maintenance on it.
Summer maintenance.
We just wait until after the budget's passed each year, and you just, I just, I just put in the numbers that are in the budget. And then, you know, sixty percent's winter maintenance, forty, forty percent's summer. You just got to prove that you're spending money on your roads in order to qualify for bridge and paving grants.
Yeah.
Basically, it's a formula we come up with every year, just to sign off, the state requires us to have it on record. Is everybody good with it, you've got it in your packet?
Yeah.
Okay, by consensus, we'll sign off on that. The mission statement for dump, for ARPO.
Nelson, you skipped a couple.
We don't have a public on, are you gonna...
Oh.
Can you look at that?
Oh, good, yeah, probably. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do have a comment. Back some time ago, I did come, I did send an email to the select board asking if you would allow PEG TV to put microphones on the tables, and it was denied, because I was told that some of the select board members didn't feel comfortable having a microphone on their table, or there wasn't room for it or something. Now that we have a, pretty much, a couple more different members on the board, I'd like to see if maybe you would... I'm, I'm hearing impaired, I like to watch the PEG TV, I like to watch it on television, but I can't hear most of the time because of the microphone system that we're using. You know, I was wondering if maybe the select board would reconsider the fact of possibly allowing PEG TV to put microphones on the tables again, or just start putting microphones on the table, so the people that are hearing impaired can, can hear what's going on. And it's not just a mask issue, I was told some people weren't comfortable with it. But it's not just a mask issue, because people not wearing, not wearing masks still can't hear at home on the television. So my request is that you would allow them to do that.
Basically, I'll leave that to the rest of the board. Personally, I didn't have a problem with it, but I did yield to the rest of the board, because we did have members that were, just didn't want the microphone on their desk.
I'm fine with a microphone on my desk.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
It's a general feeling that you'd like to have it on them?
Yes.
Yes.
It's important for people to be able to hear.
Bruce, I know you expressed that you did not want. Would you go with the general feeling?
I'm in the minority, so the board.
I guess you can pass the word back that we will allow you to have mics on the tables.
Thank you.
I, you have just the five of us, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else in public comments? Michelle, you're here for what, our delivery?
Just to be here tonight.
Oh, just to be here, okay.
I know, that's strange, Nelson, I, here I am.
Believe it or not, I get scared.
That is not what I was going for.
Again, you have the planning commissions, mutual, mutual agreement. I believe there are twenty-three of the twenty-six towns that are in this.
Nelson, where are you at? Our permission statement?
Oh, the ARPA, yes, yes.
ARPA, excuse me, I'm showing my age. The ARPA mission. Bruce?
Very well, the ARPA for the year. All right, if I may, I'd like to read to you, it was agreed at the last committee meeting, for the ARPA mission statement. Using the U.S. Treasury guidance, conduct a needs assessment that considers priorities for the three communities that make up our town, and develop recommendations to the select board for the allocation of the ARPA funds. Short, sweet, simple.
Seven.
All in favor, second in the mission statement. I have.
I'll pass that on, sending.
One thing I was going to ask Bruce, are you guys creating some kind of an application for... One thing I was gonna ask Bruce, are you guys creating some kind of an application for? We have a young lady in here, was it earlier this week, wasn't Sandy?
Yes.
That was questioning how to go about seeking funding for businesses that had been closed. This might be related to you too, Michelle. Is there any kind of news on that, that, to make applications or department heads or whatever?
Yes, now that we've agreed upon mission statement, the select board approved. At the meeting next week, we will develop a small series of recommendations based upon the final guidance as to what the criterion is for the types of projects or the types of initiatives that the citizens would like to submit for consideration. And we propose then to send that out to all the citizens of our community and give them an opportunity to respond with their recommendations or suggestions. Looking at probably a thirty-day turnaround. And then we take all those suggestions and we consider them in accordance with the guidance and the criterion that we sent out originally when we made the request for suggestions.
When you mentioned you're sending this out, are you gonna actually make a mailing to residents?
We were hoping to use Sandy's good offices and use the same procedure you use for any other solicitation for the town citizens. Same process.
Okay.
You put it in the next newsletter deadline, March twenty-third? Do you guys want that?
Assuming we have agreement at the next committee meeting, and I suspect we probably will, we should be able to meet that deadline. My concern is this, that we get started now and we get these recommendations back now so that by the fall, we can have a series of final recommendations for the select board to consider and we can begin to allocate these funds accordingly.
Will there actually be, like, are you, will you actually develop like a form or application process for people to?
Hopefully, that will be finished on next meeting, at the end of the next meeting.
Would we host that on the website as well as paper versions?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, that's up to the select boards and how you wish to post it.
Okay.
Fine with anyone.
Good job.
That's it.
Thank you, Bruce. The, well, it's hard to get ahead on the Roland Regional Planning Commission. This mutual aid agreement, as I said, I think they, twenty-three of the twenty-six county villages there in this. I remember, I think it's Pittsfield and Killington, and I think there's one other that did not join. For the newer people here, this is basically an agreement between those twenty-three towns through the regional planning that would provide that if we're in an emergency. We could see they actually have a table of equipment that they have in their facilities that would potentially be able to be borrowed and eventually paid for. Vice versa, if Fergie, Depp, Clarendon, if they should need, I think we went through a grader at one time, they needed a grader. We had ours open for a week and we did let them use it for a week. But it is under this agreement. Basically, we just have to sign off on it together. Appointments and reappointments. Sandy, was anybody that did want to be considered?
Nope.
My understanding was Sandy, that basically this whole list that you have here, do you want me to read through all the appointees or are we good with?
Do it from that list, I'm good.
Apparently, everybody that's listed here is willing to serve.
Should we read into the public record or just accept it?
Can't we just do it as a blanket motion?
My suggestion would be that we just accept it as written here.
Okay.
Is everybody in agreement?
Is there an motion needed or?
Yeah, we need a motion to accept.
So I make a note, a motion that we accept that one who is up for reappointments on the committees to be reappointed out this time?
All in favor, aye, any votes? There are, it's been a question with the other, with the last board that was in on the recreation committee. As everybody here is probably aware of, there was a mass resignation. It's been a question whether we're going to actually have a recreation committee, whether it's something that is passe and the board wants to handle itself. We've not solicited people for that committee. But we have, however, had three or four people that have volunteered to serve on a committee such as that. You have them listed here, Sumio CEO, David Alcorn, Shannon Pitlook, and Morgan Over. Generally, I think between everybody on the board, we're probably acquainted with everybody that's applied or requested consideration. I'm open to whatever the board's decision on this. It was not resolved in the last board. I think it's something that we do need to address as to whether we are going to have a committee or not.
I think Bruce and I, with Jill, we're going to make a date about meeting. We should have a mission statement, at least a draft of one, to present to you at the March twenty-first meeting. I've been collecting the different recreation committee plans from other towns. And I'm also like to get, I'm gonna go get a copy of our own town plan to see what we have in there for recreation and we can use those documents to help us when we're drafting our mission statement.
We haven't been able to get together, but I've actually started a draft.
Excellent.
So.
And then with the information that I have, we can probably present something very comprehensive for you at the next meeting. If that sounds good.
With the fact that we have a, pretty much a new board, would it be reasonable to suggest that Sandy at least notify these people that we are considering them at this time and that we expect to have some kind of decision here in the future?
I would say that would be reasonable.
Yeah, it's, just for their own planning purposes, knowing that they might still be.
I'm sure it's been a while since I'd like to have an idea.
Yes, because it has been a while.
So I'll let them know that you'll make a decision March twenty-first.
Well, that will, we're going to be considering the draft of the mission statement at that time and that we'll be getting ready to take further steps after that meeting.
The face mask requirement for town hall.
I have two other quick appointments. Somebody on the select board, we need somebody on the select board to be appointed to the scholarship committee.
That's right.
That's just an annual appointment, it's just a one-day meeting. We have scholarship deadlines, like the end of April.
Yes.
And then Ann Dades from the school will call whoever is on the committee and find out one date that you reviewed scholarships and then. We need just, we have Bill Burks from the provincial committee is gonna be that rep.
I did it last year, is there anyone else who'd like to do it?
If you're familiar with that, since I've.
I'm familiar with it, yes, I did it last year.
Yeah.
Do you want?
I think that'd be great.
Sure, I'd be fine doing it again.
Are you gonna do it?
I'll do it.
And then the other thing is Julie needs somebody to sign payroll warrants. It's like pay orders, but it's payroll. You just review the warrants every week and pay and sign off on them.
Rose used to do it, it's just a quick sign off.
Sure, yep.
Kathy, good for that. We're good. Face mask requirement for the town hall. I thought the way that one town handled this, that if you're not vaccinated, that you continue wearing a mask. From what I understand, both Julie and Jill are comfortable with it. You're in town hall, too, Sandy. Is a consensus of three that you're okay without masks on?
Yes.
Then to the board's permission, I'd say that we would both be mask required.
As of March fourteenth, the states, the state is making masks voluntary and that's happening, I think, in every indoor location. Yep, so I am fine with following state guidelines.
Yeah. And I think especially if we, like, some of the other towns did recommend that if you're unvaccinated to, I think making sure that that verbiage is clear for everybody because we don't want anybody coming in who is not vaccinated. Or at least have it, have an insight into it.
Yes, yep.
Okay, we should be good with that then.
Julie also asked me to ask about the Zoom account. Can we terminate the Zoom account? We started the Zoom account to do some of the meetings during COVID and then we just had the last one for the informational meeting. But if we're not gonna do Zoom meetings, she'd like to eliminate that expense.
We should be able to reinstate it as quick as possible. Because like, it's really just clicking and putting a credit card in for that time. Even if it's, we find out that somebody's been exposed and we want to be able to do it or for whatever reason. I think it's not something we need to keep on.
Okay.
Something I keep on.
That's called for.
Jim.
Select board comments or concerns. It's your opportunity, if you have something that you've got on your mind or whatever. Other business, you do have a list of grants that have been funded or are being funded. This is basically information for you. We are advertising for the Elton lifeguards, I saw the ad in the paper. Does that appear to be this week yet?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, and here I am, I know, my son did apply.
Yes.
My oldest son even.
Yeah. You also have a draft for the stormwater runoff. To be honest, I'm not real good with some of these drawings.
Yeah, it's hard to try to figure out what exactly they were wanting to work on.
The, Bruce is probably more familiar with it. They proposed running, what was it, a pipe out through the parking area in the area where the flag is. And they were gonna put a catch basin or a drop inlet. And at the time that the discussion came up, once it was in there, it was gonna be Wallenford's requirement to do any maintenance in the future. Which obviously would be our expense, our crew doing it. And I know there was some reluctance on the board at the time to agree to that. Other than that, I don't think we had a lot of discussion about this.
Garrett, you probably remember this maybe better than I do there too. Part of their plan, they're crossing the water main that comes up through the playground.
Uh, yeah, there would be more going on than that at all. Well, first of all, that water main doesn't go across that square anywhere near that where the flags are. That water main goes all the way right in front of where the park, from the sidewalk, right in front of the school. So it wouldn't, if they did it in the flag area, which I haven't seen the plans, it wouldn't impact the water main at all. The water, like I said, the.
They want to go basically a drainage field right along the fence line. As we're looking, we're looking at the school and the playgrounds after.
There is a drainage field there now, so, which the school uses for that catch basin when they have it. Right underneath where they wear their gloves.
They're gonna eliminate that. The one thing I was concerned, now maybe I'm not remembering this right, but I thought that water main came up parallel to the property boundaries. The map shows it at a diagonal, is that correct?
Right from where the gate is, where you go through to Southern Temple. Southern Temple, where the gate is, you go right to the grid line, right to the corner of the school, the front corner of the school. And then it cuts across and it goes right through the middle back portion of the parking lot, but it never in fact said area, and it was a square at all. The only thing I wanted to add, not be wrong, we're trying to drag you, that's the place for. I was there in the initial discussion. And when the original engineers came and they brought this program forward and we were trying to decide whether we wanted to get involved with it or not, and we did get involved with it. But the one thing I remember the most that they told me, the engineers told me is, we can belong to this program now and use all this grant money that the state's gonna pay to do this. Or in a few years, that's gonna go away and then it's gonna be on us. Because they are gonna do something to clean up the water from Otter Creek to Burlington. And we're either gonna let them come in and do some engineering and pay for it or we're gonna push them away and tell them, well, we really don't want to get involved with this. And then four or five years down the road, the state's gonna come in and say, well, you've gotta do something about the water that's making it off Sugar Hill into Otter Creek or something. That's just, and I don't know if that's still the case, but I know that that was very, something they really hit me when they said it at the time. So as I was looking at, well, we've gotta worry about cleaning out a catch basin over in front of the school. That sounds like, when we got a road crew and we got equipment to do that, it sounds like something that might take a couple hours to do opposed to having to dump two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars into a project so that we aren't running any water out from school street into Otter Creek. That's my case.
Especially if we don't have any major timeline now to complete this versus having to.
They're still, absolutely, they're still just continuing to work on it. So I would keep my eyes wide open, I would pay attention to what's going on. And I wouldn't be quick to dismiss anything that's coming down the road because I hate to see the town have to finance this rather than getting all the work money from the state.
Are these water lines also the ones that come on the south of the block?
The water line, the main water line you're talking about?
Yeah.
There's some of the, some, off that main water line, there's some schools, school streets, excuse me, got fed from that water line.
I think it does, because I just dealt with this when I put in the fire system.
The block, it went right beyond there, I don't think the block did.
And what happens with the water, I haven't looked at the plans either, but underneath the, through the south kitchen section, there's a huge cistern underneath there, which is like on the, I guess on the east side of my building, which catches, as I understand, an enormous amount of water. Because strangely, I've never had water in the basement, there's never been water in the basement, but there is all of the water.
Yeah, they've still got water main.
Right down there.
There's still water main that runs up school street, comes to the corner and runs up. And that's where the block gets fed from and that's where it kind of probably feeds back from too.
That's interesting, so if there's like designs being laid and made, I think it's really important that those, that the infrastructure underneath is really well understood.
Well, even just looking at the map here, the abandoned septic tanks, whether or not, if they start working, it looks like they're getting, I mean, it's hard to tell exactly, but it looks mighty close.
Those septic tanks are no longer there, right, Phil?
No, they're still up there, they're both there. I filled one, there's two, I wanna say five or six thousand gallon, maybe ten thousand gallon septic tanks. I filled one when we went through it with a truck years ago. There's still another tank out there, and I think Gary could back this, I think there's a leach field out there.
Yeah, they've all been discontinued.
But they're still there.
But they're still there.
So they're gonna be tying into, not only would they come off one forty through by that flag pole, they're going right through the old school foundation.
they're going right through the old school foundation, which I don't know what, how they're going to get into there and come out of there with what. But going down over the bank, they are going to cross that water main and they're going to end up putting something into, could be a pre-existing leach field that would reopen.
That's that leach field where, under the, under the catch basin, under the boxes. Remember, I think you worked on that. You didn't want to share that at that time.
Yep, and then, like I said, there's still another leach field down below where those two big concrete tanks are. Plus the new water office.
The ground film basically has been running that light right through the middle of the parking lot. It's not in?
It's not going through where the center of the greenness? I have to see.
I have to do my last one.
I think this is all related to input to...
This is the one. I remember this catch basin has to go for us.
I think this is all related to input to pass on too. So all this information on leach fields and septic tanks and everything, it's good information that they'll need to have. As it goes into the plan.
That's where I...
Yeah. They're working towards which we, ownership consultants from the fire district now. First case, the case with fire districts involved.
Yeah, but they're running this rate.
And then ownership consultants.
This is the light though.
Email me today. They want to apply for a zoning provision. It's scheduled public hearing in the county commission. So I wrote that on to Erica. The zoning, zoning, just today that night. So there'll be a public hearing.
The main, the main is right through here.
This is, they're saying, they're just using this as a buffer site for the main.
Do I have a warrant or anything?
It goes out there. They're running that right through the center. Coming down the driveway, the end of here.
I sent her, she was, she was tied with the emails.
They're going right through those things.
But she checks her emails. But yeah, you can let her know if they want to. But the school, the school's also involved in all the conversations, Gary Marcy with Buildings and Grounds. They've been very involved in it about two years, so, in the fire district, so.
Make him have a quick call, just to be sure he's wearing that leach field.
Okay. All those things, the septic tanks, the leach field, all of it.
All right then. I think we've completed everything we have on the agenda. Does anybody have anything else you wish to add? Do we have a motion on it?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One second.
All in favor, Cleo?
Aye.
We are adjourned.